Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting the Board of Aldermen's Order to Stand and Recite the Flag.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And now, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Alderman Bachman, absent. Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
Alderman Dickerson.
Here.
Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Mayor Bowman.
Present, and we do have a quorum. We do not have any ceremonial matters tonight. Our respected guest, Ms. Brianna Kiodini, was ill this evening, so we will do her proclamation next meeting on June the 3rd. Moving on to the approval of minutes, the Board of Aldermen's Work Session, May the 6th, 2019.
Motion approved. Second.
A motion from Alderman Dickerson, with a second by Alderman Dorhoff, to approve the minutes of the work session the Board of Aldermen made the 6th. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now, the approval of the minutes of the Board of Aldermen's Regular Meeting, May the 6th, 2019. I think I had the first from Alderman Davidson and the second from Alderman Reese. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The Board of Aldermen's Regular Meeting minutes are approved. Moving on to the agenda items. Chief Hofer, the Library Truck Night. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the Board of Aldermen, before you, tonight is the application permit from the Cass County Public Library for a truck night. They've done this a couple different times. They're getting a little bit bigger this year and request use of city parking lots. It would be the two parking lots to the east side of the four or the two directly north of the library parking lot. Staff doesn't see any concerns with that. Street Department will be blocking it off or providing barricades for them. Staff recommends approval. Entertain any questions.
Any questions for the chief?
I make the motion. Will you approve?
Okay, a motion from Alderman Turner.
Second.
Second from Alderman Milner to approve the request for the Cass County Public Library to host a Library Truck Night. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion passes. Chief, go ahead.
The second thing on your agenda that I have is Heartland Baptist Fellowship is doing a 4.4-mile walk event, August 30th, from 6:30 to 10:00 p.m. Again, this event's been probably five or six years. It's a fundraiser for life issues addiction recovery ministry. We've had no problems. The majority of this happens outside the city, however, a little part of it is in the city, so the requested use of city streets. It's out and around the Justice Center, and then they walk south of town to church out there. We've worked with them, provided vests for them, because they have all the intersection block and anything like that, and we also provided an escort for them, which we'll try and get through. Having no problems in the past, staff recommends approval.
Questions or discussion?
Motion approved.
A motion from Alderman Davidson. A second from Alderman Reese to approve the request for the Life Issues Walk. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That request passes unanimously. Go ahead.
Next thing on the agenda for me is the shower locker room, a combination for the Police Department. The 2019 City Harrisonville budget had $20,000 for the building of a shower changing room in the Police Department. We opened bids, May 7th, at 2:00 p.m. in this room. We received two bids, one from Kenny King Construction for $50,500, and then the one from Brantley Construction of Stillwell, Kansas, for $47,000 plus some additions. Unfortunately, that's quite a bit larger than what we had budgeted this year, so we are asking that you take, you deny these, whether you deny, not accept these bids. With that, we would like to take the money that's budgeted for the 2019 program and do what we were going to do in 2020 and look into getting locker rooms, or lockers for the locker room. Been working on that for 2020. Actually got a locker that was built custom for us. It was built by MBE, Missouri Vocational Enterprise. I received that locker actually last week as a demo, because it was custom-built. It's phenomenal. They did a really, really good job. We're really happy, the guys that went through it. So we'd like to have your permission to look into getting the lockers this year. The bid price that I have on it from MBE is $775 per locker, which is $100 less than if we buy 20 or more. But the price is only good for 30 days. Problem being with the tariffs and stuff, they can't hold that price, not knowing what steel's going to be. You guys, any of you individually or as a group, are more than welcome to come look at it, or we can look at it when we do a tour in June.
Does the quote come through?
Well, 30 days from the day I got it. I got it last week, so we're about three weeks left. And being it's over $15,000, we got to go out for a bid.
Unless it's through the state cooperative purchasing.
It's not. And I checked, and they are not part of the state cooperative purchasing.
But it does somehow seem appropriate for prisoners to make lockers for our Police Department.
They did really good work. This is beautiful.
They made them for our fire department. So we got a little use out of them.
Yep. So do we need a motion to amend? What do we need to do?
So first off, we need to reject the bids.
All right. I make a motion, we reject the bids.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Alderman Milner and a second from Alderman Miller to reject the bids that the chief has presented. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously to reject the bids that have been presented. And now...
Second up would be to make a motion to allow the chief to, you're amending budget, so to speak. He's staying within budget, but it's a different item than what was approved. So you're allowing him to go out for bids on, for lockers, staying within the allotted budget amount.
Going out for bids, or he's already got the bid?
He has to, he has to go out for bids, because he's over $15,000.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. Okay.
So it'll be longer than three weeks that's left on this quote. But they may still come back with the same amount, but he has to go out for bids on it. So you're just allowing him to go out for bids instead of, for the budgeted amount that you put in for the locker room, letting him go out for bids for lockers for the Police Department.
Even though the lockers are basically part of the locker room, we still have to amend it?
Yeah, yeah. Because this was not, we didn't go out for bids on this part of it. All we went out for bids for was on the, actually finishing the locker room for the bathroom, the bathroom and shower portion.
But not furnishing.
Right.
How long did you want to go out for bids for, and how are you going to do that? Because for custom-made lockers, I'm not quite sure how you're going to do that, and if you have a bid...
Who hired you?
Well, actually, I'm trying to help you, chief, to get to the, to get to the point that I think if you went out and tried to find and get requested bids within the next three weeks...
I don't know that, like Mr. Walsh said, that we'll be able to do it in the next three weeks, and unfortunately, we may see the price go up and not getting as many as we would like. So what I was going to do is take the diagram that I actually drew for MBE, and they built our specifications. They cleaned it up and put the measurements in. I was going to send that out, try and find some companies that use a steelwork, and see if they could do that, but I don't have anybody. I know there's locker companies out there, and I do believe they're going to come in a little bit higher than what we can afford, but having to do that, go out for the state bidding.
Well, the only reason I was asking is that if you went to, if it's going to be, it's not like you can just publish a notice in the paper. I mean, you're going to have to solicit bids from targeted companies, and so if you can accomplish that in the next two weeks, to get them, you know, get them what you have and tell them you need to know what it is, what they're going to do in two and a half weeks, whatever you get back, you get back, if you're trying to make that three-week time frame.
Right, and that would be great, but a purchase over $15,000, you still got to come back and forth.
And you don't think the board could approve it in advance?
Not the board, so I don't know.
I kind of was getting the sense that they would like to do that in advance, and if the motion was that we authorized the chief up to whatever that amount was, then it would be a motion that would be, you know...
So I can then make a motion to allow the chief up to $20,000 to go to bid and get bids to purchase lockers for the locker room?
Yes, you could. Based on the design and parameters that you already have, so you would be bidding apples to apples. It's not like you're advantaging or disadvantaging one company or another. In fact, if there's a disadvantage, it would be your current bidder, because they've done all the work, and now you're just going to go shill it to whoever else might want to bid on it.
Don't tell them.
No, that's okay.
There are prisoners.
Okay, does everybody understand the motion, then? The motion that I have a motion on the table to allow the chief to proceed with bids up to $20,000 for the lockers that are currently designed on the paperwork that you all have? I'm just looking for a second.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion from Alderman Milner, a second from Alderman Davidson. All in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. It passes unanimously. So I'm going to move back up the agenda, because I overlooked public participation. So we'll go back to item number three now. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the Board of Aldermen? Okay. If you would just state your name and address into the microphone for the record.
Hello, my name is Tammy Caldwell, and I live at 107 East Walker Drive here in Harrisonville. So I'm actually kind of following up my neighbor, Pym, that came last month and kind of talked about storm issues, because as of today, we're going to get a lot of rain. I've already been out, and the creeks are already rising. So my question is, is that last year, when I actually spoke with the city engineer, Mr. Martin, a letter had actually been sent to the Army Corps of Engineers to talk about the flooding and what can be done in our neighborhood. And what I was told, and I was not at the last meeting, was that we actually got an answer back, but there was no numbers or anything like that. So my question is, is what are you guys going to do with the money that was actually been given, if there was a grant given? What are the plans to do with that money? Because we actually helped, I mean, Mr. Martin wrote the letter, but it was our neighborhood in the flooding who helped initiate that, so I really hope that that money is appropriated to our neighborhood and not something else within the city. So does anyone have answers to that?
So the Corps of Engineers is currently doing a hydrology study that we had applied for, and they're going to probably complete it, we figure, around October, with everything working correctly, if they can get it done in time. So we have not received anything back from them. We have money budgeted for stormwater that does not have to be used for this particular project at this time, so if they come back with some recommendations, then we'll have money available in the budget.
So when you say money available, what kind of money are you talking about that's appropriated for that?
We have $100,000.
Okay. So was there any money that was given into a grant or anything that you had actually, that was given from the Army Corps of Engineers? Because their fiscal year started in October, so if you're telling me that it's not until October again, then that's another fiscal year. So was there anything given whenever you guys heard back from the Army Corps of Engineers about money that was allotted so far?
The only thing they allotted it for was the survey that they're doing.
And how much was that for?
$75,000.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, back to the agenda items, Planning and Zoning Appointment. I'm sorry, Appointment to the Board of Building and Engineering Appeals.
So the mayor would like to appoint Brian Wooten and John Foster to the Board of Building and Engineering Appeals, as well as reappointments of Jeff Carterman and Mike Cox.
Will we bill them all as one?
You want to do them all as one? A motion from Alderman Milner.
Second.
A second from Alderman Dorhoff to accept the appointments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Wooten is in the audience. Thank you, sir, for agreeing to serve. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And if you see the other appointees, please tell them thank you for their service to the city. And now, the Planning and Zoning Appointment?
Mayor's advising the Board, for the Board's consent, to appoint Chuck Jones to the Planning and Zoning Commission. His term will run till November 2022.
Motion approved. Okay, and a motion from Alderman Milner and a second from Alderman Turner to approve the appointment of Chuck Jones to Planning and Zoning. All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Thank you. That appointment passes unanimously. Onto Records Destruction.
So this is a yearly item that we're trying to keep up with yearly. The departments have submitted, and it's been checked by the city clerk. We have certain documents that don't need to be kept, and these are the documents in these listings that we would like to destroy. We have shred-it come in and do the shredding. They'll do it all one day onsite and give us a certificate.
Any questions of Mr. Welch? I'd entertain a motion, then, to accept the request...
Motion approved.
A motion from Alderman Dickerson.
Second.
A second from Alderman Davidson to approve the request for Records Destruction of 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. And now, onto Health Insurance City Increase. Go ahead, Mr. Welch.
So we discussed this in our work session. This is the amount that the city will contribute to offset the costs for the employees. Again, we discussed various numbers, and it sounded like you all had agreed on 12% increase. We're looking for a voice vote so that we can move forward to put that information in for NPR and our billing process, but when we come back with a budget amendment later this year, this will be included in that budget amendment. It'll be in that budget amendment as a change.
I want to thank the Board for the great discussion that we had during the work session. I feel like everybody participated, and we asked good questions and got good answers, so I want to thank you for that. And now, I would entertain a motion to provide a 12% increase on the part of the city for the health insurance premiums for remaining seven months of 2019.
And motion from Alderman Dickerson and a second from Alderman Milner. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Thank you. That motion passes to approve the 12% contribution on the part of the city to the health insurance costs for this year. Thank you, Board. Moving on, Council Bill 28. Mr. Mayor.
Council Bill 28 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen, City of Harrisonville, Missouri, to authorize the city administrator to execute a purchase agreement with the one Swinson salt spreader of Viking Clive Midwest in the amount of $12,317 and establish an effective date thereof.
Good evening, Mr. Jacobs.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the Board. I'm ready for this request, purchase of salt spreader. I've had one on the budget for a few years, can take it off. This year, neither. So I ask you to pass this. It is an improvement over the last one. We've been using steel, but lately, the last few we bought have been stainless steel, which I hope it should last longer, the others I have. So, 2007. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion from Alderman Dickerson and a second from Alderman Davidson to approve Council Bill 28, the purchase of the replacement salt spreader. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Council Bill 28 is approved and becomes Resolution 022. Moving on to Council Bill 29.
Council Bill 29 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen, City of Harrisonville, Missouri, to authorize the city administrator to execute a purchase agreement for one 2019 Ford F-350 four-wheel-drive truck and equipment from Alitha Ford in amount of $58,555 and establish an effective date thereof.
This request is for a replacement of a one-ton that, it's a, what we've had, the carburetors are requested, that we give to them, because theirs is much worse. So if you have any questions regarding this, it's a one-ton, but it's going to have a, don't dump it on the back. We use it for patching, we use it for everything. Just throw something back. They hold up well for us. Any questions, be glad to answer those.
Move to approve.
Let me back up just a second and ask if there are any questions or discussion. Okay, thank you. Now I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson and a second from Alderman Turner to approve Council Bill 29, a resolution to approve the purchase of the four-wheel-drive truck. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Council Bill 29 is approved unanimously and becomes R 023. Council Bill 30.
Council Bill 30 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen to authorize the city administrator to execute an agreement with Build it LLC. Build it. Build it LLC, an amount, sidewalk replacement at the Harrisonville Community Center, amount of $24,212, and establish an effective date thereof.
Good evening, Mr. Deal.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Board. As stated in your memo, because of the savings on the project to renovate the front entrance of the community center, staff went out to bid so we can complete the entire front entrance of the community center, which has poor and failing concrete. Three bids were received, with Build it LLC being the low bid of $24,212. This is $3,173 below. Available funds from the savings, and it's also the savings on a total project that was planned within the budget. So Build it LLC is the low bid for the front entrance initial project, and they would be onsite and therefore provided a good price for their work while they were there. The Park Board has approved Build it LLC for the front sidewalks completion and request Board of Aldermen approval, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Is this for, are they going to do both phases? Are there two phases?
Basically, initially, that was the two phases of the project, but they came in substantially low on Phase 1, so we just included that savings and added the sidewalks to go out. Initially, it was just going to be the front entrance, but this way, we would be able to, the front entrance and the sidewalks all the way in the front, still within $3,000 under the entire budget, so.
And I believe you told us at the Park Board that this work was all going to go on at the same time, and people will still be able to have access to the community center?
Yes, they would stage this in a way that part, partial front entrance will be open, and then when they complete one side, they'll move it to the other side. And initially, we had scheduled them to start on June 3rd, and this additional part, and complete it by the end of June, that part will be, but we'll have to look at the sidewalks addition to see if that's additional. Early indication from them, if this is approved, that they believe they'll be able to get it all done within the month of June.
Is the patio anywhere in the future?
Yes, it's in the future. It definitely is, and both sides of the patios need that as well. 13-year-old building and ice melt and everything that has deteriorated that, but yes, we'll get some estimates, and that's going to be part of future capital improvements. Not scheduled for right now, but it will be a part of that.
Thank you.
Does this figure also include the landscaping part? Is it just the concrete work?
No, this includes landscaping. What we're going to do, there'll be a little bit less concrete in the front, and the landscaping that we're going to do is, it's about 2-3-inch riverstone-type rock, and it'll also include prairie grass-type planting, so it's going to look really nice out there. And eventually, it's not part of this project, but our idea is to take acrimonial steps on the islands in the parking lot and do riverstone. It will match with that as well. So it will really make the center look really nice.
Any other questions for Mr. Deal?
Move to approve. Second.
Y'all are so eager tonight. I have a motion from Alderman Milner, a second from Alderman Dorhoff to approve Council Bill 30. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Council Bill 30 is approved unanimously and becomes Resolution 024. Aldermen in committee report. So I'll start with Alderman Dorhoff. Alderman Milner?
I attended the Chamber's Simon Shup Thursday night. It was actually fine. It was a little breezy, but it was still a very pleasant evening. Had a decent crowd, don't you think of?
Yep.
About, what, 70 people, I think?
I think we had almost 80.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it was very successful for the first one in a couple of years.
Yeah, it was really nice. They invited different organizations throughout the community to come up and talk about, set up a table and be able to present their agenda for what they do. Bright Futures was one of them, so we were able to set a table up and visit with quite a few people, and I got a good feeling from the people who had set up their tables that they actually got to talk to quite a few people and get their message out of what their organization does, so it was a good evening.
Excellent, thank you.
I forgot to mention, we did the walking tour Saturday.
I saw the pictures of that.
And it was great. David Atkinson did a great job. It was raining, but it was still really fun. There was probably at least 30 people, would you say? 50?
Oh, good.
A little bigger than I thought. So I would suggest to anybody that hasn't done it, go on one, because I learned a lot about the city.
So since you're not afraid of the rain, would you go outside and get my car and pull it over? Thank you. Alderman Reese?
Nothing. I'd everybody stay dry.
Alderman Milner?
I have nothing.
You want to tell us about the Parks Board, Park Board meeting?
It was a very good meeting. We covered a few things. The best thing about the Park Board meeting was the bid that came in from Build It. We were so excited to see the same company did that, to get the entire project done. It sounds like Coldplay, the weather cooperates, so they'll get that done in June. So we're excited to see that finally come to fruition.
Thank you. Alderman Dickerson?
Yeah.
Alderman Davidson?
Nothing.
And your Historic Preservation Committee meeting was canceled for this month, but it should be on the calendar for June. Thank you. Alderman Turner?
I attended my first Planning and Zoning meeting last Thursday. They got some final drawings done, prepped for new company coming to town, stuff, and then also some special permit for Joshua House to build new buildings, increase their capacity, and stuff. Afterwards, I went to the Yonkers Casino, RC, and there's a lot of booze, and there and a lot of good information.
Excellent, thank you. Report from the city administrator, Mr. Welch.
You've got the updated report at your seats. A couple of things to cover. Junk in the trunk was very successful on May 11th. They're looking at, and I'll bring this as a request at the next meeting, they're looking at expanding into the parking lot, the old hotel, because they filled up three of the streets. So it was very successful. They don't, they see it growing, because last year, the same thing occurred over the few months. Attendance increased, so they can see it increasing and want to make sure they got enough room. And a total of 352 vehicles, trucks, cars, vans, some with trailers. They dropped off trash on our cleanup day. It was a really good amount, because also on that day was our brush drop-off, so there was competing items. But I think people got out, did some cleanup, and helped the city to look better.
Want to tell the Board about the April 2019 municipal court report that they're seeing in their packets now, just so they know why they're getting it?
Yes, so this...